Grade can see. A whole grade sharing, or maybe you're not. It's all about the intent for your.
Great.
Like.
Good.
This video over there.
The grand.
Maybe.
Oh, right.
It said there aren't any schools currently doing this.
To know it.
Go.
We don't think.
But those grades. Sharing. There is.
So we are live.
Yeah, you're on.
Mm hmm. Thank you. Cory's at the roundabout, so he'll. If you. He doesn't. And Jamie hasn't reached out yet.
I think he's into a thousand. Right, what can we do? Or to fifty three, that's a few students. They should significantly.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Here.
What? So. Yeah, can you can add some stuff on my desk? I don't know who gave it to me, but so. I mean, and so I went through it. And you just got. So.
Yeah. Please. Yeah.
Oh, do you? It was present. All the best. Yeah.
Because. All the pictures I have are Denise.
All right.
Well, and it's. It's gonna be.
I need to have my picture taken, why?
It's gonna be two Becky, we didn't know about the one, so there's one that's gonna be with Brooklyn and one that's gonna be with Denise.
Okay.
So these two and then needs them.
And whoever they want, because you want them down in there too. Whether you want to remove some pictures before the meeting. Then I'm not into it. Sorry, Denise. It was one of them like, I don't know. The last tour I had her. I've lost yours.
It's hard telling the newspaper picture, right? Yeah. Yeah. Moss.
Boss, my servant. Looked at it.
These from the house. No. I ordered something for Friday for the fifth grade. It's a kick fall thing. Cause everyone down and I'll award him with a cookie after. Well, actually, it's more of a.
I saw them.
Matthias was trying to to jokingly like do a battle with life for the Packer ego game. And then I seemed like that I was. It's official now, we do have a.
Alright.
One, it's like. And he says, you guys can pay me and bake goods. You know, so. That's kind of a just a thing. Are you, are you gonna be there?
Right? Oh, yeah, like so.
This Friday morning.
Four ten minutes.
It's in the. Eight twenty nine, I think, on the five. I ordered us parents some sweatpants. So where? So we're gonna like go and rock in it, so. I sold jazz up though.
Yeah.
Entertainment.
I'm so busy, my side. I was looking at getting expanded in his mouth. And how many?
Like the. Just something mentioned it, but then we don't haven't had any help there, so I'm like, oh, it's. Doing it.
So I'm getting more. He already had it. And I just had it taken out and he's like, can I bring this to school? I was like, if you want.
Here, Matthias, you can have it.
He'd probably say that too.
Um, only it worked like that, boy.
We had to follow up with the ortho.
He. I would never come. Oh, my god, that just keeps on. Will this keep monitoring, will this keep? Cause I feel like he has a milk, has a stain though, so.
I'd get the ortho recommendation.
I probably will, and our dentist has left at the time of night too, so.
Cause after that, they let.
Um, closing, what time, what?
It's nowish.
I'm saying Matthias probably is, because he's so much advanced with maturity with them.
Yeah. I was like holding it like Matthias. It's really. Hey, it's a don't during class time.
So she still have.
Yeah.
Eric comes out in and out.
Came out and then they re-measured and they'll put in a smaller one that'll stay until. Braces or whatever, like kind of the future, but this was the one actually like ratchet.
Mm hmm. That just sounds painful.
And my brother said it was, thank you. Wasn't. And we had to find a line to do it.
Hmm.
Yeah, good. This one. Choice cheaper. There is.
Well.
And Calvin's on Donox's and braces. Yeah. Just his thing.
Well, yeah, no, we was everything. My friend is Louis Donovan was lying, he's still doing.
He's probably doing like kind of. If he comes in the future, this is just. Getting the base.
A lot of wondering if it's aligned for Sophia, but.
Yeah.
She doesn't really seem to care, and she only has a little bit some comment, like, you don't care.
Should I care? That's great. But he did great, like Carol. He lost it, like the pretend one. Three times in one week. And one day he's like, I think I left it at school. Comes to next, he's like, no, it was in my bed.
We still.
Right.
It's a single, this is the lines. I had braces and I followed up with like retainer, I'm sure. Like you and I have like they pulled a tooth and they never like closed it in. And so dentists, I was like, do you wanna put an implant? I'm like, yeah, but I don't wanna spend the three to four thousand dollars. Good investment, and so I'm like, it's all good, I'm gonna. I'm like looking back when I had, I'm like, you saved the tooth, why didn't they just move them together and? Or give me retainer for life, which they didn't do either. Maybe, is he on his way, is that what we're waiting for? Hmm, that was a few minutes ago. Once my camera just went by, I heard her talk. You can just go for our clothes. Okay, we know that. Hold up.
All right, it is five oh seven. Going to call the regular school board meeting for Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five to order. This time I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ball. At this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Cory, seconded by Katie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Moving on, uh, special appearances. Uh, donations from Rick Halfley, Knights of Columbus.
Wish we address the. Group here regarding programs that the Knights of Columbus runs throughout the year. At various locations throughout the country. Uh, one of these programs, the one you're probably quite familiar with, Coats for Kids. Now, Coats for Kids, that is, uh, not just a program the Knights, uh, pro. The Knights worked with and provide coats, but also other organizations to the same. We've identified what we always thought was a short time and coats for kids. And that kids need more than just coats during the winter. There's a large, I shouldn't say large, but truly it is. A fair number of children that come to school. In clothing that is not appropriate for the weather conditions, especially up here, wears cold. Certainly, they need coats. But what the Knights see as deficient is. They need hats, they need gloves, they need boots, they need. Almost any kind of clothing. Quite literally, any kind of a cloth, clothing that a child would need. The Knights of Columbus wishes to provide an avenue for the school to obtain. We had obtained, uh, created, I should say, a few years ago, what we called an emergency clothing fund school. It is our pleasure to continue to fund that program. I have. Five hundred dollars that we wish to put into that program for this school year. These funds would be used for any type of clothing that a child requires. Quite literally, from the outside to the inside, whatever they need. School deems as appropriate. That we should come out of that clothing fund, and we were very happy to contribute this five hundred dollars. I understand Brooklyn Tregel individuals receiving. Um, secondarily, uh, I had planned on just one presentation. A second one came up. Just late last week. Another program that we run, it's a Tootsie Roll program. You'll probably seen the Knights handing out Tootsie Rolls, it's a free will offering. That occurs typically in the late spring, early summer. It takes a long time for the program. To complete, not only. Is it that we're giving out the Tootsie Rolls, but then the accounting has to occur back at our state organization in Madison. Finally, the monies have come back to us so that we can give them back to the organizations that need them. We are very pleased to be able to provide to the school for the intellectually these disabled children, those that have trouble learning. A check in the amount of six hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety three cents. These monies again will be distributed as the school deems fit to further the opportunities of those children that have difficulty learning. And I'm. Very pleased to continue this program, we do this or try to do this every year. Um, as an organization. Um, we are. Very conscious of what it takes in a school district. What children we think, what we think children should need, and this is why we kind of change a little bit on what we would normally do. Coats for Kids, sounds like Coats for Kids, no, we're kind of an offshoot on that one. You wanna provide a clothing fund, they don't, the children don't have everything that they need. Coats may not be the the thing that they would require, we want to be able to give you the opportunity to fill that need. And the intellectual disability children. It's unfortunate that this occurs, but they have every right to an education as everyone else. And we wish to contribute these funds to ensure that they have the best possible. Educational outcome that the school can provide. With them, I thank you.
Thank you.
You know how many years you've been doing the Tootsie Roll thing?
Oh, my goodness. Um, this particular, the intellectual disability has been going for, in the best of my knowledge, at least twelve years. Um, the code, codes for kids. Not quite so long.
Okay, I was a recipient of the Tootsie Roll one, and I'm guessing it was about twenty five years ago. So Mike Murphy was in the Knights of Columbus at the time and it was directed to my classroom, so it's been at least that long. Oh, that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic, thank you all. As that being said, uh. I make a motion, we accept the. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Nope, we can go right into it. I make a motion, we accept the five hundred dollar donation for the emergency clothing fund from the Knights of Columbus. And a six hundred and fourteen dollar ninety three cent. Uh, for the intellectually disable, intellectually disabled.
I'll second that.
Motion by myself, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor say aye. 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 Thank you once again, Rick, and the Knights of Columbus. Uh. Monthly donation from community supporting teacher groups.
So this month's winner for the community supporting teachers donation is Ryan Carsten. And he has won cash donated by the Emory and the Shet- the Shetler families.
That's awesome.
Congratulations, Ryan, thank you very much from the Em- or the Emory and Shetler families. Appreciate it. All right. We had to make a motion to accept that one, I think we should anyways, doesn't hurt.
I'll make that motion.
Here.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cory, seconded by Polly, to accept a very generous donation. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you once again, uh. For all the community members honoring our teaching staff here, it is greatly appreciated. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? Okay. Moving on, treasures report.
There are no tangents, um, we have. A playground loan, I did just get an invoice from the.
The one that's on the pay bill, is that the invoice you just got for the playground, or is that already included in? It's like fish. So that's been added, there was one, there was a pay payroll bill for the playground.
I don't think it's off. Right now, the playground loan on here is sitting at one forty five, and that payment was fifty.
Fifty two, and it was on the seven.
Yeah.
So that wasn't added, so that'll be on next month's.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be ducked off.
Okay, thank you.
Is it fifty two hundred or fifty two thousand?
Fifty two thousand. So is that it? I guess we can talk about that.
Yeah. There's one intention payment.
That brings us to over ninety thousand left.
Mm hmm.
And should be getting things wrapped up. Like I said, at the committee of the whole, it's good to see that we're in the black for once. Um, it's good to see that. Door term borrowing getting paid off for at least a little while. Hopefully. Yeah, we're trimming continues with more funds coming in. Where it is.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasures report.
Motion by Katie. Seconded by Cory. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Uh, moving on, uh, presidents, report and correspondence. Uh, just wanna say, received a note here, uh, from War for Kids. Uh, saying, uh. Dear, uh, Mr. Shetler and Siren Schools, thank you for all of our support to Northwoods Christmas, Artisan Crackers Fair. To all the staff help and use of the facilities that help make our event a success. All proceeds go up to providing our youth and families enrichment opportunities. Thank you for your support, Mom for Kids. Great to get things like that, it's always. Much appreciated, um, from the community. Um. We just received a. Uh, generous donations tonight, and yeah, it is good to remember, weather's getting colder. And I know the school isn't supplying stuff like they used to, so having these donations come in. Uh, will be of great help with that. Um. And of course, we have. Thanksgiving break coming up in a week here, which I don't know about the rest of you, but my kids are already counting down the days. And. Some interesting news as far as the government lies coming around involving some of the schools. And some of the bills getting passed. Uh, so I'm sure we'll be making some resolutions in the near future to go in line with those as well. Um. Yeah, so. Well, I have it just so everyone has a safe and happy. Thanksgiving week off here. And get to spend time with friends and family. Moving on, reports, superintendent.
Uh, good evening, everyone, thank you for letting me zoom in. Um, you can see the first, uh, press release there comes from Governor Evers. Um, I just wanted to share this with you because I guess the takeaway for me is at least it's getting attention. Um, second paragraph, first sentence talked about how he was shocked to hear from several eligible school districts, well. For us, that's, that's not anything new. Um, we're not shocked about it because what happens with us is, you know, like I said, we, we get random payments. However, I will say that, uh, one of his aides did call and talk with Laura. Uh, um, in the district about our aid payments, Laura, I don't know if you wanna comment on that at all, if they asked you directly, I wasn't a part of that phone call, but do you wanna comment on that?
Well, they asked like roughly how much to get, if we have gotten any aid payments. And I explained all the way we get our aid payments, the one on that there's no rhyme or reason. Or any definite dollar amount to our payment.
Yeah, so I don't know if the governor was, was aware of that or not, but for us, this isn't necessarily new, but the fact that he is just giving it attention now, I mean, we'll take it. So I think that's a positive.
Definitely.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanna share that with you if you haven't seen it, and then the second, uh, piece here is the legislative alert that I put in there, the Governor Evers. Signs the cell phone restriction bill that, um, is set to go in place next school year, uh, beginning July of twenty six. Um. You know, there's been a lot of talk, and this has been going on in other districts and that, and I've talked to superintendents in other districts and. You know, it seemed to be working pretty well, even though it wasn't legislation, they were doing it, and it seemed to be working. I'm sure you guys have seen national articles too about how in some districts student achievement has improved and that, but, uh. Interestingly, though, I have been in contact with other superintendents in our conference at least about what they do prior to this thing coming out, because we were just exploring this option, so. Um, we'll, uh, have samples for you as we move forward, we'll, like I said, I've talked to other superintendents, we'll start working on this, uh. Policy shortly, and, uh, we'll bring drafts to the, to the committee, the whole. That's all I have for my reports.
All right, looking forward to it, it would be nice if we got some more of. That impact aid for sure. And it'll be interesting to see what options we have with the cell phone situation going forth. I know there's been some little contention that's come up with it, but. Uh. Have to navigate as best as possible. Thank you, Kevin. All right. Part from the principals, Mrs. Herman.
Um, we had really great attendance for the first conference. Um, everyone is recording over eighty percent. Um, attendance, so we're, it, it felt really quiet, but it was just. I was surprised at the numbers that we had so many, so I was excited for that. Um, and just a little mini plug for our family event coming up, we're gonna be doing, um. Charlotte's Web as a whole elementary school, and so families will be receiving the book and they'll be able to read together and. Um, we'll have all kinds of activities and then a culminating activity, a full family event to go with it at the end. Sometime in late January, early February, so we're looking forward to that.
Sounds good.
Anything about school report cards, Carrie?
Pardon me?
Anything to report on the school report card?
No, we were, um, I was told we're doing that at Howl next month.
Okay. You made the DPI ones? Yes. Thank you.
You wanna have anything else for Mrs. Herman? Uh, let's see, Miss Campbell, excuse.
Do you have anything that maybe Miss Campbell would have shared, or not necessarily?
No, not this time.
Okay. I, I wanna say thank you to the, to Beth Peterson for, um, the National Honor Society induction, it was very, very nice. A nice opportunity to visit with some of the families that were there, the presentation was great, and. I enjoyed being there. And then do you have anything to say about the Veterans Day program, because I wasn't able to be there, but I'm sure it was pretty cool.
Um, yeah, we did have a Veterans Day program, um. Uh. We had a program, we, our four graders actually got to come see it this time because we had their teacher was our speaker. Uh, which was awesome, um, she is a, I'm gonna say this wrong, Staff Sergeant with the National Guard. Um, so she has, she, when she's not here teaching our kids, she's in charge of twenty to forty kid, twenty to forty adults. Um, on the weekends, so it's pretty awesome to have, um. And she also was deployed once also. So, yeah, it was pretty awesome to have her there, um. We also did our, as we do, as we have in the last few years, um, um, invited the. Veterans to stay with their families and have lunch with the kids, which I think, in my personal opinion, is one of the best things we do. We also had a lot of, uh, participation by the elementary teachers and their classes, there was a lot of really cool stuff on the walls. Um, that the kids had done, the artwork and the things that they had done to, um, honor the veterans, which I think came through really well. Um. It, it's, it was a good program, I've been to a lot of them. And I kind of felt like it was one of the ones that were as well attended as any of them in a long time, so.
Thanks for, for doing that, one of the reasons I bring that up is I think we spend a lot of time sometimes on the hard stuff and forgot to, forget to recognize. Or celebrate the positives, and those, um. Those are some real positives on our. Those are some real positives and our community appreciates those events when they happen, so. Wanna bring those out every chance we get, please.
I appreciate that, Polly. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, moving on. Reports, Special Education Director.
So I am currently working on getting, um. Air Commission to share IEP and five oh four information with College Board for ACT accommodations. Have a few more parents I'm still trying to get in touch with. Hopefully those will be entered in December. And. Again, we are receiving money through the Transition Incentive Grant. Post-school outcomes, um. connects with students. They connect with students this past summer that would have graduated in summer of twenty twenty-four. Kind of finding out what they're doing. Are they in school? Are they working? They've got four or five or six questions they ask. We had eight students that. Were eligible to be contacted, four of them they did connect with. Um, two of those students did not meet the eligibility criteria, but two students did, and in June, we will be receiving a check of over nineteen hundred dollars again.
Are the four that they weren't able to connect with, like? They've, don't have a good phone number or something, somebody didn't answer.
Collect all that stuff, parent information and provide all that too, but that doesn't always mean that they're.
Yeah.
Well, that's excellent.
Good to hear. They could have gotten in contact with more of them, but, you know.
Yeah.
Those and whatnot too. Hey, real big hopes and hopefully. Keep up the trend of them continuing to further education. As we go along. Anything else or? Denise. Thank you. Uh. Native American Report. It says excused, um. He had sent out an email. Did you get that, John, or no idea? So in her email. That I received.
We all got it, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sent it to the board.
Yeah.
Lisa sent it.
American Indian Language Revitalization Grant awarded nine twenty-nine to twenty-five. Tanya is working, uh, on Fridays, providing language support to students and staff. Terror's developing curriculum, resources for general support as well as supplemental materials. For the Rosetta Stone classes. Uh, family and community engagement activities are planned focus. Uh, needs assessment result title six program. Will take the needs into account when making plans for programming. Just, uh, community results, uh, eighty-four point two percent college and career guidance. Seventy-eight point nine integration of Native American specific material in the curriculum. And seventy-three point seven three-way tie between substance abuse prevention, eligibility, language instruction. And cultural programming. When it came to result, our staff results, seventy-three point nine, uh, the attendance rate. Fifty-two point two were substance abuse prevention. And forty-three point five were tied between school readiness and parent participation. Interesting to see what the next steps come from this. Towards the further integration and what is gonna be planned out given. The community and staff results.
Well, it looks like she maybe applied for more and got less. Does anybody know what she applied for? How much? And then is Ta- does Tanya not usually work Fridays? What is Tanya's normal schedule?
Not usually on Fridays.
So now she's here five days a week? Thank you.
And we did receive a letter in here. Awarding us with the grant for twenty-five thousand. As well. And. From the American Indian Language Revitalization State Grant. For the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year. So that is always helpful then. And hopefully, like I say, we'll hear more from Tara herself. Moving on. Looking to approve the minutes. For the regular school board meeting minutes for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
We can motion to approve.
One second.
We have a motion by Polly, seconded by Corey. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Waiting for approval or looking for motion to approve the special board working meeting minutes for November third, twenty twenty-five.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Amy. Any discussion?
Do we need the? Motion by and seconded by. It looks like we're missing one on. B. And one on four.
Is that the ones they emailed you about?
I think so.
Well, I added those. I wonder what happened.
Says motion by and then seconded by, but there's no names. I don't know if we.
Yeah, those are the ones they emailed you about. Okay, so add those. I already did add those. I'll add them again.
So with those corrections, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Looking for approval of special board meeting minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Yes, I had a. Oh, okay. Can we discuss it now? Yeah, it looks like we didn't do anything. Didn't we have to go back into? Open session and have a decision? Looks like nothing happened.
Um, Lisa, can you make a point that I'm the vice chair? And opening the meeting, not just the chair? And there was only five of us, so when we adjourn. It shouldn't only been five passed. But yeah, back to Polly's comment.
Yeah, there should have been an approval to approve outside.
We mixing one and two, cause it just goes to three. Once we reconvene, or no, never mind, that's, I see where that three is coming.
Are you asking me to take the motion from closed in to open? Is that what you're asking?
Well, we voted. Are you saying that's supposed to do?
Well, anytime we take action, it should be recorded somewhere and it was not.
Well, it's in the.
It's, it's in the closed minutes.
Put it in, pull it into open. Usually I get directed what stays in closed and what comes out into open.
But it says the motion there is by me, yeah, seconded by Jamie. In regards to acquiring outside counsel. That's to reconvene into open.
I, I guess I'm confused, cause I thought anything that was. Approved in closed session had to go into open session. Are you saying it doesn't?
I'm saying that usually motions are made in open session that are supposed to be in open session, otherwise.
Oh, you're saying that that should have been made when we went back into open session as opposed to staying out.
Well, usually I d- depend on you guys to say that needs to go into open, or you're making the motion in open, but. It just stayed in close, so it's in close.
Mm-hmm.
So it can come out into open. I can make an addendum on it, whatever you guys would like.
I feel like we need. That addendum. Doesn't look like anything happened.
Okay.
But it matters.
I'd make a motion to approve with those minor changes, please.
I already have the motion.
But it doesn't hurt. So. Uh, somebody wanna second the amendment?
I'll second that.
So, okay, so I originally had Corey as the maker of the motion, so is it Polly as the maker and Corey as the second now?
Polly is the amender. Of the motion. Which will be to bring. The. Thing or the motion from closed. Into open. Within the minutes.
Yep.
So that's what we're voting on right now for the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Myself. I wasn't part of it. Then the motion on the table is. Uh, to approve the board meeting minutes for the special meeting that took place November tenth, twenty twenty-five. With the amendment. Uh, posed by Corey, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining once more.
I'm sorry, I'm very lost right now. I have a motion by Polly and seconded by Corey to approve the special board meeting minutes of November tenth. Twenty twenty-five with the addendum of bringing the motion from closed in to open, and that was five to one.
First, uh, first it was the addendum. That had to be voted on. Then it's the mo- then it's the approval of the minutes that had to be voted on. Polly did the first, Corey did the second to the addendum.
Right.
Then Corey did the first and Jamie did the second. To the approval of the minutes.
Thanks.
Yep.
And was that also a five to one?
Yes.
Thanks. Well, there's one color as a no, or is it just abstained?
Just abstained, yeah. It's not a negative.
No, no.
Sorry, just. It's confusing. Although I don't have any more pen.
Good, Lisa?
Yep.
Just making sure.
Thank you.
All right, now looking for a move, uh, sorry, looking for a motion to approve the committee of the whole. Minutes from November tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Polly, seconded by Corey. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Post. Moving on, new business. Gardner quotes. So this came up at the committee of the whole and. Basically, I think we're left with. If somebody wants to make the motion to do the two primary and hold off. On the third one or just approve all three right now.
Did we ever figure out what we had? What it was your question last week with the budget? Is this? Was this part of, or you weren't touching something for plot, leaving it for plowing? Like if we did this, this would go from the referendum funds? Or did we have this line itemed in the budget for this year?
Well, we didn't have it.
Okay.
But we did have a fund for maintenance.
Yep.
And then I think I'd asked how much we had. Put on that line.
Or. The services.
Yeah. That's what we'll use for the plowing. And but then there was another line, right? You said, said.
The plies has.
Yeah.
Plenty.
Plenty in there. For right now.
Is there any big supply purchases that we're anticipating?
So the three areas were the unit vent coil. Then the locker room. And then the. AHU repairs. So which, the two that we were looking at were. The locker room. And the vent coil, I believe.
Is that the girls' locker room?
Was the locker room one. That was not.
Right, that's not as important.
As important. But we had talked that they think they could get. Two of the projects done in one day.
Mm-hmm.
Which could potentially save us a trip charge.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we do all three.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Corey, seconded by Polly to approve all three quotes. From Gartner Temperature Control. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Next one is the generator quotes. Um, apparently Dan has heard. Nothing more about from anyone in regards to any of these. At this point.
There's, there's a new one that came in today.
Afternoon.
Oh.
And I put the notes in the. Write-in more docs. I put his notes and then I added the new quote that he sent.
The new quote is in all caps.
It says new quote.
Yeah.
Got it.
In caps.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and he made some comments about it, so that his comments are in your notes there too. Do you see him or do you want me to jump out? Or somebody's in the agenda, they could read them. I'm, I'm in the minute portion, so.
So even with, does that include his notes, include the new? Updated, this is an update, not say the new. Oh, they're on the top.
And what parts are gonna be twenty-three weeks for theirs to come in?
Week time.
Cause I have six months.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we go with the, uh, shell. Or schnell, sorry.
Shell.
Shell. No, no.
Uh. Quote for the generator replacement.
I second it.
Yeah, that's the one I picked as well.
I guess the question is, so he never got clarification on the wall? The cement wall?
I think that's something that's just gonna have to be an extra.
We're waiting for, he's gotta reach out to the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they have the contacts to be able. To from the sounds, but. So motion by myself, seconded by Polly to accept the shell quote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post.
All right. Some referendum for that?
Most likely, yes. We'll have to use the referendum for that. Uh, medical leave request. Uh, we discussed this, uh. During the committee of the whole enclosed. And. I make a motion. That. We approve the medical leave requests. Uh, for Mrs. Herman.
I'll second that. What, what were the dates? December third through?
January.
It's, yeah. It's not, we don't have the. Request in here.
But we had it at the last.
Right.
Right.
I just wanna, um. Maybe ask that we try to keep anything that needs to be done during Carrie's medical leave done in-house, um. That's great that Carrie's willing to help, and if there's times that that needs to happen, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I just think it's a little more clear. When the people are in the building, you ask who's in charge of what, so I would like to see it kept in-house if that is possible.
I don't know, they can't. That's why I'm just questioning.
Right. All those in favor are looking for a motion.
You made the motion.
I made the motion.
I second it.
We had a motion.
Katie. All right, motion by myself, seconded by Katie to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Looking for a motion to approve for maternity. Leave request.
Motion to approve.
From Katie.
Just flying again.
Flying again.
Oh, add a gift, that's. Motion by Polly, seconded by Corey. All those in favor say aye.
Who was the teacher?
Mrs. Flanagan.
Yes.
So Lisa, why, I mean, I know when we got the stuff and come, I'm. Going back, so like there's nothing on these three, and I know when we had them last week, they were enclosed, so it wasn't public, but now that it's out and open. I don't understand why the requests aren't here, so the public can see who's making these requests and.
Because I wasn't sure about the the ability to put people's private medical information out in the public. So if you want me to move those.
Well, I don't know, maybe we can't. I just guess I just assumed since we're. Now, I mean. We're just giving a name. I feel like in the past, the name's been there. And even like the IT coordinator information.
No documentation.
Thank you.
Remember, this is a new process.
Absolutely, it's all good.
And. I. Would have been nice to have the documentation on this one.
Yeah, I'll I'll speak to it. Brandon Olson from um, or Mr. Olson from Frederick. Uh, we've met, want to do a sharing position with him, and he's going to be sharing between three schools, Siren. Um, their elementary and their high school, middle school, and I think you remember we had factored in some mileage, and so. I think that the total that it was going to cost us for the remainder of this year would be uh, in the neighborhood of twenty seven thousand.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Corey, oh, sorry, motion by Polly, seconded by Corey. To approve the IT coordinator shared position with Frederick. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Host. Motion passed. All right, on the meeting calendars. Committee of the whole. Then it was scheduled for December fifteen.
It's also the high school Christmas concert, but we're at five, so. Should be done by seven. I guess it does, or middle school, high school.
Fifteen works for me.
All right, we'll go with that if there's no other major conflicts. And then. Uh, regular school board meeting, Monday, December twenty second, twenty twenty five at five P M. No other conflicts unless we're gonna go with. Twenty second at five P M. Special board meeting, budget working meeting. Do we want to do? This on the eighth, like we did this month, or?
I'm out of town the week of the eighth.
I also would not be able to make the eighth.
I can do the first.
I can do the first.
The other week is that?
I can do the first. I just. Want to hope that um. Admin might have some ideas of the list that we gave. In regards to possible numbers or scenarios to look at by then.
Is there any way we could go midweek that week instead of the first? Or some other day?
The issue is Jamie's not gonna be back until that day.
Oh.
Oh, I mean, she's, you know, we're, because we go right into, she comes back Wednesday of this week, so she'll be back for two days. And then we're on vacation right till the first. And she's been gone for a week, so when she gets back, she's gonna have a lot of. Things.
What does the sixteenth look like for people the day after committee of the whole?
Back in too late?
No, I don't think it's getting too late, but. Let's see, there's basketball that night.
Hockey, but. I don't have a high school or a basketball, so I don't think there's a middle school game that night.
He said the six, are you looking at the sixteen too, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Amy, Katie, does the sixteenth work?
Yeah, the sixteenth works for me.
We'll get for the sixteenth as well, so. We'll do the next uh. Yeah, that works for me. So special board meeting. For budget working meeting.
I'm gonna, I put our notes in a Google document and I'll just send it out to the board. If anyone has other ideas that they're coming up with, they can add to it at any time.
Appreciate that, Katie. Thank you. All right. And that is the meetings. All right. I'm looking for. Motion to approve the bills for the bill cycle, ten twenty five, twenty twenty five to eleven fourteen, twenty twenty five.
You're not gonna believe this, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and I don't have any question.
Oh, I have a question.
I have a question.
The motion by Polly, seconded by Corey, uh, discussion. Uh, the one thing I I was just. Glanced over it and I saw, of course, right away that there was a negative for. Lawn care.
There's a positive, a few lines down though.
Right, but they're different, so I was just curious as to why.
No, they're the same. There's another one.
Oh, there's a third?
Yep, there's.
She accidentally shredded her check. So I had to void it and reissue.
All right.
Yeah, and then there's another one for the three thousand, but that forty five twenty.
I saw the three thousand.
Okay, yeah.
I have a question. So for mileage, Tara has a check for reimbursement for tra- mileage for five hundred dollars?
Out of her, um, it's for her.
Where did she get, or maybe you can't say, it just seems like a lot for.
It is for.
Is it per diem two?
Per diem.
It's all per diem, so it's like. Food and mileage, it's not just. It's just, it's not just mileage, so that just seemed like a lot for.
Travel.
Okay, that makes better sense than just mileage, because I'm like, that's a lot of milet money for mileage. For just whatever, four days or whatever the dates are on that. Okay, thanks for the clarification. Like, I figured it was legit. I was just questioning.
Anyone have anything else to stand? All right, we have a motion by Polly, seconded by Corey. All those in favor to approve the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host. Times report signature, that's on Corey. And. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, yeah, probably got it. Third, I'll just repeat what I said.
By Corey, seconded by Polly to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Host, make sure.